Twenty second.
He gets nothing.
He got a nice building.
Wait a minute, he needs one more thing for two hundred fifty dollars. Sorry.
You need what?
One more thing for two hundred fifty dollars. He needs a metric scale. Because if they ever do an autopsy down there, they need a metric scale and he felt so bad because they wasn't getting money.
Conversion chart.
That counts.
I don't know how those numbers deal with that, but remember Stephen came in and was just like, oh my god, is there any funds left? Need this or this thing? How much is it? Because he said, I can't afford it. My budget, he says, about two hundred fifty dollars.
Yeah, right. He wouldn't find him a conversion chart and three dollars a calendar.
Once you get that calendar, it's five thousand.
Five thousand? Who spent enough on him?
Just for autopsies and.
Body bags and yeah, he said he's way over.
What are the autopsies or?
Is he that far over?
He said basically that was almost the only thing that he wanted to do or not.
He has also this year.
I can see that. I think so.
I think so. Yeah, they could, but the guy doesn't want to come this far.
Correct, but we may get a new, what do you call it?
We could, and with the population corner.
Or the autopsies, there's a.
Oh, pathologist. Pathologist.
Pathologist.
Yeah, it's possible.
If we have one in the area, I mean, we don't have it. It's just gonna be. Certain money. Somebody will not retire, they'll move to Cody, be part of it.
There are very many of them.
How did I move to Florida? That sounds like somewhere.
There are a lot of strange people up there.
Just in the autopsy.
In the autopsy, yeah.
So the bottom line is over?
As many people that are moved to Cody, I mean, seriously, I could put that on a questionnaire, what you guys need. Um, he said that body bags went way over this year because he just.
Autopsies.
Yeah, autopsies.
Thirteen five over.
I do, yeah. He said it's because of public. Not necessarily, he just said population increase and there was a lot of it out of the place. Some of it may be on a roundabout way because of some suicides, that type of thing, but you don't know that very much.
California breathe real air.
Yeah. You could live that long.
Here now.
That's a father's day joke. You would be in which trouble. Well, I don't know whether you say that. With no cars driving, they have lots of clean air out there. For here. Okay, he's on his way. Which one? Objection. Okay. Sorry about that.
And then when he sent his email, we were saying that.
Um, we got the weekend. Judge, yeah, we hate to say it all right, probably, but I'll never be against the answer.
So don't cry.
What else, uh, softball game?
Big guys. You'll be fun.
Your honor.
Hello.
All right.
How are you?
You can come set up your clothes where I can hear you.
Thank you. I'm glad you rescued me. I couldn't have taken another few minutes of court. I had to use some excuse to get out, so thank you.
Anytime.
It looked like lots changed. You know, I tell you honestly, um, we had a, it was interesting, you know, this is our first full year with COVID, so I'm trying to deal with that and it was, uh, we're able, I think, to stay right on the budget that we anticipated, but, uh, I would just ask that you consider if we could just keep that same number because we do anticipate we've got three or four jury trials scheduled in the next six months. And it looks like those jury trials probably will go. All of them are criminal cases and, uh, we anticipate it should be, you know, at least four or five days in length, so we always have the cost of, you know, our Bala, I think on the Klingbill case, we had, just so you know what we do on that, we bring in Mike Neville. I've known Mike for a lot of years. He does a great job and Mike has a great rapport with the potential jurors coming in. We've had a couple of open hearings and, uh, you know, I know the issues with COVID kind of go back and forth, but, you know, I just feel compelled to let the commissioner know what all, you know, you know, we're kind of in a tough spot where we are because it's no secret, but my longtime judicial assistant, her husband died of cancer. He has been for the last two years. He's very susceptible, he's in and out of treatment. Comes back home and then he has to leave with the evidence. And the doctors told me and I've talked to them, they said, look, it wouldn't take much and you can't have any exposure, so we try to limit what we can in terms of that. Plus I have other employees who are cancer survivors and still receiving treatment, so we have had some open hearings and they've done very well. People come into court and they made their arguments and we've had them kind of sit behind the plexiglass. It's a little stilted. I really wish it was the other way around because you know, I practiced law for thirty-five years, I've had a lot of cases all over the place and never have I seen anything like this. And it'd be easy to say, well, it does make a huge difference. But the litigants, the lawyers have been tremendous. They've been just great. In fact, we give everybody a choice now. We say, look, if you want to delay this, maybe give it another three or four months, we can go ahead and have that in open court. And without exception, they're saying, Judge, why don't you keep waiting because it saves us money? We don't have to drive four hours for an hour long here. We don't have to bill our clients for that month. The clients are happy. Um, I think with one exception over maybe a hundred cases, bench trials, we go ahead and one objection. And in that case, we entertain it. We did it in open court. And based on my decision, they probably wish they'd never tried that. So, you know, it's a mixed bag. It really is, but, uh, you know, honestly, uh, you know, the commissioners' board has been great to us. We feel that this budget is all workable. Um, I just, uh, I like to have that cushion there just because we have saved money on G A Ls way down regarding that land cost we used to pay out. An average of ten thousand a month, that's almost nil. Uh, Jim Davis, as I mentioned before, is a great help to me because he is, uh, he's a good lawyer with practical skills and he can do the court commissioner work. So he does any court commissioner work that we have that normally had to be hired out, so these numbers, I think, are consistent, but, uh, it's always a chance some of these cases may settle, but I know in two cases, um, we do have visiting judges coming over based on conflict. And, uh, that always takes a little more money, but, uh, they've been very good about it and we're trying to see if we can do those cases as much as possible to speed up the service. But, uh, obviously, these criminal jury trials, they have statutory guidelines as to when they have to be tried and, you know, and honestly, the defendants are pretty smart because many times they don't waive speedy jury trial. It puts us in a bind because we have to try it, so that's what we're looking at on those criminal cases. Okay? Um, public defender rings at the very bottom there or exactly is that? You know, that's an amount that we have to pay each year and we have paid each year. It's a stipend that goes to the state public defender, all of them who stayed in court. They, uh, because Park County, even the fifth judicial district, that's kind of the location and the headquarters of the public defender's office, so can't remember how long ago it may have been. It may have been when Judge Patrick was here and we were with the commissioners. We went to Judge Patrick and, uh, at that time, the state public defender was Kamikowski. How he came and we made the argument, you know, that money helps us because it supplements our RIT because we don't have enough state supplement. And, uh, so the county agreed to pay that, so what it is, it's a pro rata share for each of the four public defenders that's paid to them to help their rent to business, the rental office is down at the old Shoshone Bank, right across from, uh, I always use that, Sheraton Avenue, Cat Guard Building, it's right there on the right house. It's been a great office because people can go there, it's easy to find, so many times when they get out of court, they don't have a car. And so we find many of them walk over from the courthouse, go to the public defender's office, get their assigned attorney. It really helps us move the cases along. So that's what that rental supplement is and I think with the state, you know, like all agencies, uh, you know, they had to cut back. That's a huge benefit for them and it is for us and the court.
My question, and I, I want to really, the big problem with me is, I just wondered, do we need it? Why have we not used computer technology equipment and hardware? Is that being picked up by a different department? Because most of our other departments are looking at the way of computer. So is this something that we supply already? That's why it's zero? We haven't used that, those dollars for three years?
You know, we get, uh, a lot of that money comes from the state and, uh, they do our computer upgrades. For example, with COVID, they did all our computer upgrades in the, uh, in the courtroom, I think, almost six hundred thousand dollars.
So is our IT department is only related to you?
Uh, they are. They're very helpful to us and they work.
But it's not our equipment?
It is state equipment and I, the truth, I don't understand, but there's a licensing agreement with all of the equipment, so we have to be careful that we don't involve the county or else they claim that we violate the terms and conditions of the license.
That's why I just know whether, uh, because we haven't used it and it's just looking in other departments, commissioners as well, we don't have a line item for our tech equipment because it's something in a different area. If you're a part of the county, it would be that way.
But, uh, county IT has been wonderful.
Yeah, this is county and this is county dollars. And I understand what Commissioner Teal's talking about is we have a thousand bucks in there that's just, it was used, I think, the first year you got in there. You might have used it for something. I mean, I don't, I don't mind leaving it in there.
I don't either if it hasn't used.
Yeah.
You know, I could get Mike because, uh, about three months ago, we did have the local IT with the county. They had communicated with the state and I can't remember exactly what it was, but it was a purchase of Sunrally Tampani, significant item. As crazy as it sounds, it's all that high-tech equipment in there and kept having difficulty with the system and I didn't plug it in right, you know, so it's like, oh my gosh, you know, so I had to get somebody who worked there for sure. So, yeah, it's, you know, there, we could use all the help we could get.
And you may not build it. You may have too. They may have built it to their own.
And that's what I was getting at, is build it through a different department than what they're on something.
We can ask Mike about it.
Now, this, this COVID thing definitely, I guarantee I would not know how to assume meat if it wasn't for that.
You know, I, I'm the same way. I mean, thank God, we have people in our office who are really tech savvy and I'm not one of them and they are great help. You know, they've been coming in on every hearing we have, but, you know, for example, just real quick, I'll tell you, you know, what usually happens, we would kind of keep rough numbers as to how many cases we could get done on bench trials. Because, you know, for some reason, and this is not unusual, but it is pretty contentious here and people, there aren't a lot of cases resolved themselves. They have to be decided by the court, so you know, domestic or whatever else, or commercial cases, you know, we could maybe do, uh, we could do three, four trials, uh, every two, three weeks. Now, COVID, you know, we'll do, uh, three, four trials, uh, weekly. And we just start early, finish them all and people that really, it makes us, we can get the decisions out quicker and, uh, you know, many times, uh, after they present their case, they close the, they settle the case, give us a comment, say, that worked out, we get the decision. So, you know, I, I think, uh, as I say, people have really, uh, embraced it, but I sure wish you could go back to where it was, but I, I just don't know, like everybody else.
Do you think that we will continue to use some of these practices in the future because of this?
You know, honestly.
Possibility?
I, I think we try to be, court is always open. So what we do, when we have a case, we send out a memo to all of the litigants and say, if you want to participate, call in at this number. And sometimes we'll have twenty-five people on a call, the press, visiting members. And we do a kind of an informal poll and say, how did that work? Or they go, it was great, didn't have to leave the house, I really appreciate it, didn't have to travel. I prefer to, you know, have open quarters, we traditionally know it, but, you know, honestly, so many times, these bench trials, nobody shows up, just the litigants and the witnesses. The witnesses are squustered, they don't come in until they testify, so they're not allowed to sit in the courtroom. So it really, it just, I think it's much more efficient. It saves the county money. You don't have to have a lot of personnel in there all the time. Have a lot of those asteroids.
Then why you ask for the same budget?
Well, because. It's a good point, but, you know, because I really do, I feel kind of like the tsunami's coming, you know, because some of these jury trials have been backed up and I think they're just gonna come down hard. So, you know, if, uh, but I promise you, maybe, maybe next year it'll be, uh, you know, but it's, it's just hard to tell. It's impossible to gauge that.
Wouldn't feel, you wouldn't feel right if I didn't give you some credit.
Listen, I expected it, you know, and I just told Teresa, I said, I think Mr. Lewson maybe toyed with me, give me three different dimes today. And I was completely off balance, but, uh, you know, I had a good lunch and I'm okay. I can't guarantee I'll last though.
We make the paper your own.
I, I don't think we have a gamble. I will tell you, the one thing we do have that is kind of a momentum, that shows you how time changes, I don't know if any of you remember Judge Dixon, I know Commissioner Mangle. Judge Dixon was really old school and if he was practicing today, I'm not sure what the outcome would be, but he smoked in court. He had, he had this huge ashtray and he'd just sit up there and smoke and we're all like, Judge, we can't, can't quite see you. And then, you know, and he was always, uh, it's, it's hot days like this that I remember so well because it was like, uh, August of eighty-seven and the heat had, the AC gone off in the courthouse. It was about a hundred. And everybody was just dying, but Judge insisted on court, he says, Judge, can we do it tomorrow? No, 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 gotta do it, gotta move along, so Kenny Kane and I showed up in dress slacks, tie and short sleeve shirt. He put us both in jail for three hours and he said, we didn't have a sport coat. He told me how to have my wife get me out at like nine at night. He said, how was your game? And I said, wow, I'll never complain about the air conditioning again. But not that those, but those days were certainly bad, but I do have Judge Dixon's ashtray, which if things get difficult in court, we just bang it.
Your honor, we appreciate you coming down.
Well, good night. Good. Appreciate everything that, uh, you always were willing to hear us out and do for us and, uh, you know, it really, uh, at some point, I think I, you know, liked the visit with you too because we have had some other issues with the state agencies because of the budget cutbacks. And they have come to us and said, you know, we're gonna have to rethink this. And, uh, so, but what I mean by that is, you know, we have really tried to explore some other options here. We would necessarily prefer the county and the jail and, uh, you know, it's, it's a little dicey sometimes, I understand, but we just, uh, we have had some pretty good luck with this drug court program and it's been an amazing option for us. It really done some good, so anytime you need to visit with us, just, you know where to find us. And, uh, Commissioner Tilden, the ashtray's always there. I'd like to use it there. I could, but I'd like to get rid of it, but I think Commissioner Leese, uh, maybe like to give it to you. Presented by. Well, thank you all. Take care.
You're next.
I just didn't want you to think that I.
I was putting this really. What's that? His budget this year really bowing after us.
By the way, there's nothing really wrong with me. I'm just looking for sympathy on my.
Oh, that's. Yep. Came from the wrong.
I knew that too.
Okay, walk us through it, sir.
Well, basically, I mean, we're in line with most everything. The thing that's really gotten in the way this year, two things, supplies, and again, everybody's talking COVID and that's a big part of it because we have had to use supplies like we've never used before. And all. And then the autopsy numbers, he ended up this year and that's what I just handed to Steve was another voucher for another autopsy. He just could not. Most everything, meetings, we didn't spend anything, just that. Everybody avoided meetings. We didn't have any this year and, and we had people needing some continuing in hours, unfortunately. Post gave us a little leeway because of the circumstances. So, uh, we didn't use hardly anything there. The only thing for this next year that I didn't show any benefit or any need for, because I thought it was already more or less in the works with the building, is I talked and I don't know which all of you left out to, was about a scale for that new building. As we talked earlier, the chances of Dr. Dick coming over here to do autopsies is almost out of the question. Unless we would have something with a number of deaths, we had and hopefully we don't, but a bus accident, plane accident, something like that where we would have a, a good number of deaths probably, possibly. He would come to Cody to do the autopsies in those circumstances so that we didn't have to transport the numbers. And that's one of the things that he uses for every autopsy staff.
Mr. Cameron, how about fall under equipment and procedures?
But I didn't, I did not show anything.
Right, I see that.
Yeah, because.
Hopefully there's Steve now.
But, uh, we're looking, we're looking approximately three hundred dollars. It's not, I mean, it's not like.
Yeah, we hope, but I'm gonna steal.
Yeah, well, two fifty to three hundred.
Can't just use a calculator. Can't just use regular scale, use a calculator?
A conversion chart from.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah.
But you talk about, you don't have any scale in there.
No, we do. We do have any, but most pathologists look towards.
I was misunderstanding.
It's between a two hundred fifty dollar one and a three hundred, three hundred kilo. And kilograms.
Well, they gotta go back and paint over the numbers. And re-mark.
There you go. I think we probably, probably turned loose to some money for a scale, but.
Uh, and again, supplies, one of the big things has been on the body bag use this year. But I'm finding we're probably going to be pretty consistent from here on as are most of the coroner's offices around the state. Because of the COVID situation, it's made us realize that we should be using bags more for the protection of the personnel around with deputy coroners, mean law enforcement, who's ever there. So I think this is a thing that's now a permanent situation in almost all counties anymore.
But, um, I'll tell a question. Kim, on your, on the budget, the second line from the bottom, contract services order?
That's always been there. I've never used.
I know, and so I'm gonna stick my three hundred back out. That's, that's all right. If you don't need it, use it.
If I need it, I'll be back to see you.
So you want me to leave some in it?
I've never used, I have never used.
Take her out? Well, if you have to use it.
I'll buy a nicer scale. Uh, and the other thing is, is on the fuel, I got it up a little bit. And that's because I think we're looking at a set of tires this year. So, and fuel costs are up anyway and we're, we're looking at a set of tires for at least one of the super. And there's a thousand, fifteen hundred bucks, I mean, to get decent tires to go vandal, something like, something like that.
Yeah, two fifty. I did price up. Yeah, he gives that, he gives that for a hundred and thousand.
Yeah, but, or, anyway, so that's why that one, I bumped it up a little bit this year. Otherwise, most everything's pretty much safe. And I've cut it back over the years. Guys were. I'm sorry, I don't know where to go, you know, I really don't.
People aren't gonna quit that.
So, in fact, I probably told, said this before, but the first year that I was elected, I cut the budget fifty percent. Had never ran a budget except for my personal funeral. But I thought, I'll use facilities down there. I know I can cut back and do it. Well, I'm now about where I was sixteen years ago before I cut.
Should have built that building sixteen years ago.
You're right. Maybe two or three of them.
Yeah.
So anyway, we're back about where, where it was when I cut it sixteen years ago.
Everyone good?
I'm good.
I'll move in and happy?
Oh, let me tell you guys, that building is fantastic. They did a beautiful job on it.
Good.
Couldn't ask for more. Uh, as far as with meeting with families, I've only used it once. It seems most of the time, you know, I'm meeting with them at the home at the time, but that is so nice with the size of that room. And of course, refrigeration unit and all that is just. Couldn't ask for more, other than if we could get a doctor.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anything else?
Want to check it out?
Sorry, did you, did you want to look at the revenue page at all? I know we haven't done that.
I'm saying no.
Not yet.
Did you just write the one on the big email?
Tires, okay.
Wait until closer to, okay, you want to wait until closer? Well, it's gonna depend on tilt coming here, you know, as to what we're budget for, for next year. You know, that's gonna be the thing, otherwise most of our revenue is right on track.
Hey, so they're motion on court. Oh, it's a favor. Oh, well, part of discussion. Are we gonna talk about how much on the court or are you gonna put that off? Oh. Well, where are you, you, I'm, I'm not gonna be here over twenty seconds. That's what we're gonna do on the final.
Did we get the report?
Pardon? Yeah. So I need to withdraw the second. I mean, I don't want to.
When? What, what do you have to ask him?
Well, we, we need to talk.
We need to all commissioners. All commissioners, we just. And then they can.
No, Barb was saying no, don't do anything for. You were just saying no, don't do anything. What's your suggestion, Karen? I don't have a suggestion.
Let's wait a second and see what our A sense.
Okay, just to clarify, our, our fifty-two step was only for hourly?
Our department has got the fifty cents because they're on the graded step scale. And then we will receive the money comparable to two steps for each of them and we will decide how we.
I'm trying to figure out how that would, do, how do you the way we allowed it, that was within the department, so you really don't have.
There are departments.
These are our department heads.
And so we, that's what I, I guess what you're saying is, so we're looking at all of them?
Six people.
That would be.
Okay, so you add, you add the department heads, you got the two new services. So we did have that discussion to figure out what we want.
So the cola, the fifty cents is a, that's not.
They get the cola and then take two steps.
Whenever it's equal to two steps, we go, how do we wanna fly?
You could give one department head three steps and another one one. But it depends on where their salaries are. If you give, if you give Brian a higher paid, one more step, it may take two steps away from below to pay for it. Because he's a higher price, you can't take one step from a lower paid employee. So you're taking a whole.
I understand, but if, my, my way of thinking is you, you figure out what Brian, Greg, Mike, all those, what is, what is a two-step? What is, what is a two-step equal to those, put it in dollars since, we have a pool of, say, ten thousand dollars.
Exactly what you want.
And then we can get that all to one person. It may equal seven steps.
As long as it stays with.
As long as it's equal or below the step, right? So, that's what we need to.
And here's the charge.
Well, we don't know what those numbers are yet.
Yeah, go get your email right here.
But in fact, I got an email, usually tells me I got.
So the fifty cent cola, that's, that first yellow column, that's what they're automatically going to, right? Then the second, the one, two, three, four steps, you guys need to allocate that out, you have five dollars and seventy-four cents to work with. As you change these, as you change in the allocation column, it will tell you what that five dollars and seventy-four cents you have left.
So we get a split five dollars and seventy-four cents for six, six people, that's easy.
If you go over, if you go over to two steps, you pop that over, it's gonna come down to zero. If you give one, three steps, and you give one.
I understand. I was, I was being facetious.
So if you entered one of them four numbers there.
That's what you want me to do? I just, no, I go here and I put in thirty-seven five.
Yep. Oh, that didn't work right.
I don't think it's gonna be that hard, they just two steps across the board.
That didn't look right.
See, she said to put one in, so I did, and, and. Oh, oh.
Oh, she's betting that other one. Okay, I knew it was gonna.
My little addition, if you go over that, obviously it's black.
Okay, so what did you do, how did, I just wanna do this. Second one, one, two, three, eight, so one, two, three, there, nope, yeah, okay.
So now you're, you're zero, so everything's two.
That just went, very good, okay, just for example sake, yeah.
Did you change something?
Yeah, all I did was, was what Lee mentioned, just to see if, but then it all worked on the numbers. So when you do what he said, and I moved these numbers into what we wanna do, so that's everybody getting two steps. And it says, this is what their actual change is, and we used every good moment.
I'm not sure I follow you.
Well, I followed you, this would be the easy way out.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so what are you, what are you talking about, done?
Yeah, I mean, if, but you know, again, if you have an employee that's outstanding, then maybe you wanna give them three, so then you.
You don't receive that five dollars.
Right, and that's what they will tell you.
And I listed it right here, and it's been our month.
Five stepping over.
So that's.
See like Brian Edwards, he's forty-one thirty-seven, so if you give him one more step, he's making more. So you're gonna have to take one, you're gonna have to take two steps away from other people, because they don't, their one step is not big enough to.
And we probably should have done that a little bit.
We don't even have to at all either.
No, exactly, and that's why these, these initial.
So anyway, that was just how it works, and that's what I wanted, that was how it worked, so, okay.
So I, one thing, one thing remember, I guess, guys, been here, remember your two-use services and your, your person, those are separate budgets. So just keep that in the back of your mind when you're playing with all of this.
What's, different budgets?
They're different budgets, so what we shouldn't have done.
Two-use services and who?
And Susan. I, but, but they shouldn't, we probably should have put them in a separate sheet. Do you want me to, I'll work on your department heads and I can get a different sheet for those three.
It's not gonna, I think it'll make a big difference.
It shouldn't unless they give a lot to this person, and then that eliminates for them getting two there.
If you give apartment, then you have to pay for the apartment, but you can only go between Logan and Joe.
The amount is on the page total.
Yeah, it's on the total map.
It still, the total still goes up until big total.
Oh, right.
It will, it will work, you just can't take from Logan to Brian.
Okay, okay.
It'll take one.
From those five, yeah, those three, yeah.
Good, questions on that, did, did you guys give a second to adjourn?
We had, we're in discussion right now.
We did have a second, but we're in discussion.
Yeah, they, they would do their thing in their motion. No, it's, it's just, it's just still on the table.
Oh, we're still, we're still discussing, this part of the discussion.
All right, well, part of the discussion right now is, uh, as far as Greg is concerned, I think he's done a great job, he's been here less than a year. He's getting the call, I don't think he needs to.
Okay.
Okay, how do you wanna do this?
Well, we don't, so, and you're, you can, you just stay to state, we don't have to.
No, we don't, we don't have to.
We can, we don't have to.
Yeah, you, you don't have to use all.
So I'm good with, on Greg, I agree.
Let me go in and change that one then, from what you just said, so.
What you said, John?
Let me go check on here, what he said, and keep track, she'll be the changer of the numbers.
That's good, I wanna, I wanna honor this discussion and in reference to Greg. As I somewhat agree, but I also know he took it all to pick up the move, he can come here. That's his, his choice, I understand, but I also say, I think that he has tackled the landfill and trying real hard to make some serious improvements.
We have, there's, there's absolutely no question about that, it's just that, you know, the past history is, we hire somebody, they agree to work for X number of dollars. And we, the only way, at least a year, before we do anything.
I understand, but that's just, you have also been, you get a raise whether you work harder or not.
Yeah, for some.
That's how I'm, that's how I feel, I'm sorry.
I mean, if, if you wanna give him a step, that's, that's fine, I just don't wanna piss a lot of people off.
Where am I at?
Well, if we do, if we don't do a step for Greg, and he stays with the fifty cent cola, where we still have seventy-five cents, he would be at the thirty-eight eighty-six. If we do one step, he would be at thirty-one twenty-four. There, thirty-eighty-six.
Is, is Joseph in?
No.
Joseph, no, these are.
So those two are your use services and.
Yeah, I don't know why they have public work.
They have public work. Joseph.
Yeah, they got, they got, uh.
Yeah, they got, they got. They got, they got less than a public work.
Oh, she just forgot.
Those are the two use services, good.
Yeah, they're use services, sorry.
So just, with, with Greg, if you give him no steps, you could give one to somebody else. If you give him one, he doesn't have one to give anybody else, because he's the lowest.
I'm, I'm, I'm good, I'm good. No, on Greg? Yes, I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm taking a poll.
Yes.
On one step? Is that what you're saying, Mike?
Yes.
On Greg? I'd say yes. But I'm gonna say, no, why I said yes? Thank you, Greg. I'm, I'm good with giving him the cola. Well, I should run, run through it, but my colleagues.
My colleagues, you know, I, we really helped him three years ago, or really helped him big time, I don't think, no.
With that retirement, he goes, before you guys' time.
No, I remember, well, I didn't remember, but it. Six percent, no, no.
He gets the cola.
I would agree.
Okay. I don't even have to do anything.
So that we know what we still have to do. Okay.
Brian Edwards.
Both steps. He, he deserves it, if, if there's one man who worked for us, he deserves it.
Well, we put the landfill later.
Hold on, whatever.
Yeah, big step, those are big steps.
They are, they are big steps.
I'm gonna go one step.
Look at the money.
There's that two-step and one-step.
I'm, I'm, I would say one, but, um, with Ben.
I'll go with one.
Okay.
But he did say, have to you loan, so I might want to.
Just so you know, I stopped recording.
Yeah, we're.
Yes, the only comment that I would make is, yes, with the cola and the two steps, that's a big jump, but last year, Ryan did not.
Public information.
Any of the bonus money that we gave.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, we put it in the newspaper, name, position, and what you make, public information.
Mayor Cameron, I'm gonna start all over again, now we simply interrupted.
Go ahead, you're throwing, that's good.
No, I'm just saying that last year, we gave, we gave the bonus, Brian couldn't take it, he didn't. He went to the bonus and passed it out to his employees. He refers, hired Brian, we were paying forty-five thousand dollars a year to work for Marley, which at that time was awful loud. As far as the landfill been sold, we did away with that bill, we haven't paid them a dime in the last, ever been paid in the market for. He's taken over all of the land, he saved us a lot of land.
You convinced me, two-step.
Thank you.